It's a nice frog though.
I like it. What's going on? What a full room of beautiful faces. What was the highlight of everybody's week so far besides being here? Uh, Narcan.
Highlight of the week, um.
Yes, thank you.
Watching part of the stand construction for the Grand Prix.
Wait, that's cool.
Yeah, cuz they're constructing it already, the stands.
Oh, that's pretty neat.
Right by like Woodward and Jefferson, so yeah. It's interesting.
That'd be a complex little project.
Yeah, and they're doing, it's putting it up already, they're starting it.
Oh, that's neat.
Yeah, yesterday there were a lot of semis downtown hauling stuff to prepare for that, even though it's not this weekend, it's on next weekend.
That's really cool, I love that. What about Mr. Cox?
What, highlights for me? Too many to list, I guess, or what you wanna call highlights, so.
Treats. What about Woody? What was the highlight? Oh, you cruising your old, old vehicle, that's always a highlight?
Uh-huh.
You're cruising the old school vehicle, that's a highlight?
Yeah. Trying to make you think you're back in California.
Yeah, there you go. I think it's cool, what year is that?
Thirty-two.
That's wild.
You look like you're having fun.
And it's like, it's got the smell of gas that like, I like.
I see the people don't like it.
Oh, it's the best. There's like a, like, create a vibe, I don't know. He doesn't give the ladies. What about Miss Rappel, is there? There's been a nicer forecast for the holiday weekend. It's not about to get at all.
It's not as bad here, but for sustained winds at twenty-five, thirty mile an hour.
Oh, no, that's, that's a trap right now. Get there, get security.
I don't. We'll go ahead and get started with our May twentieth Plan Commission meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katie, could you please call the roll?
Baker?
Here.
Philk?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Frizon?
Here.
Hutchinson?
Here.
Olson? Payet?
Here.
Upholzer?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse absent member?
I'll second it.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have public comment for matters that are listed on the agenda? Okey doke. Uh, next we'd be looking for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next we have approval of the previous meeting minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no acknowledgement of correspondence. Do we have any public comment for matters that are not listed on the agenda?
Good evening, Commission members, Garrett She made three-one-one four-zero Island Drive. Uh, just had a good conversation with Jane, uh, City Planner, and it's just wanna revisit a topic I'd raised previously, which is, uh, Jane, and obviously with the expertise of Clerk Tomasic, uh, perhaps coming back to this commission with a proposal around different training and education platforms that might be useful. I think it's especially advantageous for new members. Uh, I know us as council members continue to wanna learn, you know, procedure and our roles and how we apply our roles effectively to each discussion at hand, so Jane, I look forward to hearing any recommendations you have, given your expertise, and obviously Clerk Tomasic has a lot of resources, he's provided counsel and commissions previously, so just having that seed planted, and hopefully you all pursue that here in the near future.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okey dokey. Uh, we do have unfinished business, section A, this is in regards to second-story residential units potentially in the C-three Marina District. Uh, Jane and Katie sent out, um, just to move a little bit ahead, uh, documentation on this, as well as the two items listed in new business, um, so I think Jane's gonna go over any of the communication, uh, or questions regarding items that came up from last month's meeting, and then we can discuss.
Yeah, so, uh, as you all will recall, we did just start the discussion on this, um, at last month's meeting, and I, you had requested some additional information, so hopefully my memo outlines, uh, answers to some of your questions. Uh, I did kind of wanna give you more context on what type of development would be allowed, uh, if second-story residential units above commercial, uh, were permitted in the C-three Marine District, and what the zoning ordinance currently requires of those types of, uh, buildings. As you'll see in this memo, it is, of course, not a straightforward task, uh, given that there's so many layers to the current zoning ordinance, I did try to break it out by the different standards, starting with the base, uh, Marine Commercial District standards, and then I also wanted to draw your attention to the dwelling unit size requirements that are for all districts, and then I know we talked about the downtown waterfront overlay last time, and I, I know, it's confusing, because it's in your text, but it's not on the map, but I think there are some good recommendations there, so we, we could utilize some of those recommendations around, uh, the character of the buildings and, uh, talking about what type of construction of the actual buildings would look like, as well as the DDA District Standards, I think could also provide some context for what the character of the buildings would look like. The, uh, there is some conflicting requirements around it, so one of the questions that came up, I know, was around height, with also around how many units we could accommodate, and what the size of those units would be. Uh, so right now, the building height, uh, it, for the C-three District is thirty-five feet, the DDA requires a maximum of no more than twenty-eight feet, and then if the downtown waterfront overlay, if we take that, uh, thought process into account, there's a maximum of twenty-four feet with height bonuses for providing river access. So, uh, just, again, I know this is adding complexity to the matter, but I wanted to give the full picture. Uh, in terms of the minimum and maximum development scenarios, I really did this as a theoretical exercise, that I don't wanna spend too much time on the specifics of, because it's just from a, a development perspective, and market, you know, what someone's actually gonna design, it's just highly unreasonable, um, incredibly unlikely, but I know that that's something that you all had asked for at the last meeting, so I did kind of just do a, a truly theoretical minimum-maximum. Uh, so for the minimum, the four hundred and fifty square foot, there could be a four hundred and fifty square foot building that has a tiny commercial business on the first floor, and then, uh, a, you know, a small, single efficiency unit on the second floor. I don't, again, I don't think there's gonna be any building that will have a commercial unit at four hundred and fifty square feet, but that, to your point of what is allowed, that would be the minimum in terms of allowing a residential unit of that size. Uh, again, I got into the maximum, I think this is even more unlikely than the minimums, um, and I'm happy to answer questions about it, but again, I wanna caution us before we really go down any rabbit holes around this, uh, but I, I just kind of gave you an idea of what the acreage is currently, it's all developed, for the most part, except for the one site kind of on the other side of the district, on the west side of the district. Um, just thinking about what, you know, an efficiency unit would look like, again, it has to be commercial on the first floor. Uh, the Gibraltar market, I don't think in the next twenty-five years, thirty years, I do a lot of market studies, will ever support two hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of commercial, uh, type of development, but if we're talking about just purely footprint, and what would be allowed within the setbacks and requirements, that's what we would be looking at in terms of, uh, square footage on your largest twenty-one acre site. Again, uh, just caution us before we go into thinking about that as any sort of realistic expectation, so. Yep, go ahead, no.
What goes into the market study, uh, and the analysis of consideration for someone to invest in the property or change the use of the district? Like, if you owned, uh, Humbug Two, and you wanted to put in a giant facility like that?
I mean, you would, you would look at, uh, from a market demand perspective, they would be looking at the population surrounding, how far the population is, what the expected population increase over the next twenty years would be, um, and then what the current retail demand is based off of the demographics of that increase in population, but also the existing population, and then you would subtract kind of all of the existing square footage in commercial, and then you would understand what you really could support for additional new commercial and residential, but since you're doing both, you would look at both sides.
Yeah, and most likely the market would show that probably not as much commercial, but the capability or the opportunity to build residential is there, because there's not a lot of waterfront.
Right.
condos or apartments.
But because you, this, at least what we're talking about currently, is looking at specifically residential above commercial, it is kind of a self-limiting feature because of that, to your point. So, that's kind of the high-level overview, um, if you had a chance to read the memo, I'm happy to answer questions, I think we can have a little more discussion around, uh, if this is something that the commission is comfortable moving forward, we're still, like, as I mentioned, we're working on the zoning ordinance rewrite, we had a productive meeting last night about that, uh, but feedback from you all around what your, you know, what's maybe causing heartburn, what your thoughts are in terms of allowing that second floor residential above commercial?
Is, uh, I have one question, and then I'll let you guys know my thoughts, and then we can go wherever we wanna go with the discussion. Is the, so, let's say you have an exi, well, we have an existing building, there's already commercial there, let's say you have another building, and you add a second story to allow for residential on top, and you have commercial on the bottom, people move in, and then you close the business on the bottom, what then?
Well, you know, you could have a vacant commercial space, if you're willing to absorb that amount of square footage and rent, we, you know, I think it's, vacancies are always hard, and it's always hard to regulate around vacancies, you can have requirements in terms of trying to get people to occupy their properties, but it's, it's a challenge.
You can't predict it, right?
Right, you can't predict it.
Um, okay, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did observe it, I wasn't home in time, cuz, uh, I was stuck at work, but nonetheless, I'm a, uh, usually fairly open to development and stuff like that, but in terms of personally living here and seeing all the new businesses and stuff, I think, uh, have done some good for the community, I do enjoy some of them sometimes, however, um, after asking like, other residents, and then thinking about like, tax, um, relief for residents, I don't believe we've seen any from additional businesses opening in the city, and to me, it's, the revenue that we would gain from it, from a city, would be immediately spent on the additional support, and I'm, I am thinking of worst-case scenario, however, knowing people that own large amounts of property here, they have capability to build this stuff, so, um, I think that that direct revenue to the city would immediately have to go back into infrastructure to support that business, uh, just because of the sheer size of it, if they went that route, that's my personal opinion. If there was a way to write a ordinance to allow the Humbug Building that has a tiny apartment in it, or whatever, I think that's okay, but I personally don't wanna open the door for other large establishments to be built on the waterfront of Gibraltar. Essentially, you'd have a co, you could potentially have a condo complex similar to what's in Wyandotte, just north of Old Portofino, except with commercial property on the bottom, which is very normal on waterfront, if you go to Miami, Fort Myers, like, everywhere, that's what they build, because it's mixed-use, and you make a lot of money if you're a developer. The worry is, could you do that here? You could, and those docks need to be rebuilt, so the question becomes, do you invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in all of those docks, I know they started on some of that, or do you look at how much money you can make when you sell an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar condo? Right? That's the question.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what I brought up a month ago, I, I, I'm actually, I'm not against the development, I really think that the city needs the growth, that's my personal opinion, but, uh, but I had brought up the same thing, we gotta think twenty years, thirty years from now, cuz somebody could build a complex like that in there.
Yeah, it's not right now.
You might be able to make more money on real estate than you can running a marina.
That's exactly right, easily.
But, it, I don't think we should make any rules based on, you know, because some people don't like it, it's supposed to be, what do we think is the best for the city, which is sometimes doesn't mean it's what everybody likes, you know, it's, uh, I mean, I think that's the route we need to take. Uh, a question I would ask is, I'm not a real estate guy, but is it feasible, uh, and economical for somebody to build so-called first-floor commercial space with zero intention of marketing it out, as long as they could still put residential upstairs?
Hundred percent.
Because we would not wanna see a empty first floor of anything, you know?
No, you could open something small, and, yeah, I guess the question comes, what's, that's the question, though, like, what's good for the city, right? What do you, is, everybody would have a different opinion, I think, on that, right? Like, for me, what's good for the city is meeting somewhere in the middle of having enough revenue to run the city efficiently, having good public safety, having good, uh, personnel leading the city, making sure DPW's supported, but also having a hometown feel, that's my personal opinion. Grozeal did a really good job of locking their stuff down. They will only build so much, and they will only allow certain height buildings, and they did that to keep a certain vibe, and that's what they're doing, so it's a choice, that's all it is.
The more I looked at it, is, I mean, commercial facilities would not be supported just by residents, it'd have to be the plan to draw people from outside. Where are you gonna park them, where are you gonna put them? It's a sure word in there today with what we have. I mean, a lot of people don't even wanna go up there on a weekend now, just 'cause it's so busy, you know, with the bar on the corner and the restaurant, and there's really minimal space, even if they wanted to put commercial, where are parked cars in a park? There's open space to park them. So, I, you know, you really wanna draw a bunch of people in here that are parking all the way down, maybe, uh, fill in the community center parking lot, or, I guess they don't like them.
I like how you depicted where there's area for growth on the, on this one diagram, but I'm wondering, does that, like, for instance, where it says six-point-three acres, does that take into account the parking that's already required for what is currently there?
No, that's just the size of the parcel, so, um.
Get rid of the existing business, the.
So, okay, so that's kind of my point.
They would tear down, and you would, if you wanted to just start from scratch, you have six-point-three acres there.
Have to be starting from scratch, so if we took into account what's currently there, that six-point-three acres would mean that, that what is there would have to be removed completely, so there's no offset for what's required there right now for parking.
I think that's one of the things to consider, is that, um, you talk about parking and things like that, you, it's, they're gonna have to follow guidelines and processes anyway, so they're gonna have to facilitate the parking requirements that are gonna be required if they're doing a development, right? This is just seeing if we would allow this to occur. So, it's, then you put up, as somebody termed, well, the guardrails, to protect the interest, so.
On the topic of the guardrails, cuz I, from what I'm hearing, there's maybe some, and correct me if I'm wrong, hesitation around wanting to, or maybe there's a desire, I'll put it in the positive, a, a desire to maintain the marina, and maintain that component, it kind of gives, to your point, a hometown feel, that's like, part of the character of Gibraltar. I, at some point, someone did a lot of thinking around trying to develop a little bit of a downtown feel in, you know, this little intersection, this little area. The standards for the DDA and the waterfront overlay, I think, are, are well thought out, like, there was some good, uh, thought process there. My question to you all is, is that desire to maintain the Marina District, you know, to maintain the actual marinas on the water, is there possibility for, or interest in allowing second-floor residential above commercial in other areas, you know, on that west portion, that five-point-eight acres, or other areas of the kind of downtown district? You have different downtown district segments that have already been written into the code, um, and I, I guess I'm just, I'm throwing it out there as a question to get a little bit of a litmus test on what the pain points are.
Well, I think on that five-point-eight acres, going down north, it'd look a lot nicer to see smaller shops with residential on top than it would another storage facility. And as far as the, I don't know, I, I mean, I love Gibraltar too, I do like the hometown feel, but this is downtown. It's, you know, it doesn't really affect the rest of the residential area, other than the immediate neighbors there, that are living next to the C-three area. To me, a downtown should look like a downtown. Something we need to consider too, revenue-wise, is you're gonna have a dual tax rule, now it's something for us to figure out how that would be processed, but that would, so even if with an empty commercial or a vacant, they're still gonna require to pay tax on that property.
As one large parcel, potentially, right? You'd be taxed on, on a commercial.
I think those are.
Business.
Guardrails we'd have to come up with, because one large parcel doesn't constitute one large residential, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I think the tax code, it depends how they would separate the building, but.
I think it's usually by square footage.
Yeah.
So, would be, well, it would be whatever your commercial square footage is at that rate, and then whatever your residential.
Okay.
Depending on if the residential was sold, or if it was rented, right?
Again, I can't speak for the whole, that's why we have a whole commission, but I'm, uh, we have vacancies in our current existing apartment complexes on North Gibraltar Road, Middle Gibraltar Road, in the Kingsbridge subdivision, there's vacancies in those apartments, Middle Gibraltar Road has vacancies in those apartments that they have posted, would we want to add additional? I was saying, in addition to that, some of those have been purchased and repurchased in the last year, and some of the, and it's a good thing, it's allowed, it is, uh, it's part of funding from the government for, um, less fortunate and those that need it, but additional, uh, like, section eight HUD housing that's been added into the city, that's open currently, which could then also be added, which, again, it's a good thing in some cases, but I think growth of a city is important, I agree, at the end of this, at the end of the day, I think a city is, is a, a business in some cases, um, I would argue that if you have enough funding to run your infrastructure with some extra to do new things and grow the city, then you're safe, and I don't know that I would grow in some areas, without going into too much detail.
Jane?
I'm, I'm biased, and I'm probably a hard no on adding apartments or residential second stories in the Marina District, that's my personal opinion.
Would it be unreasonable, or to, for example, the five-point-eight acre area, to actually do something with that, I guess, as an experiment? And if somebody's willing to spend the money to put commercial on the bottom and residential on top, and they don't get anybody that wants to move in, whether it's commercial or residential, uh, then we know not to change the rules in the Marina District.
Yeah, but I think it's different, because I think there's more of demand for people to wanna live on the waterfront versus.
Off of it, yeah.
Off of the water, so I, I think, I don't think that's gonna be a fair comparison.
I agree. So, you think it'd be much different living on the other side of the, the road versus?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, the waterfront's gonna always draw a premium.
Yeah. You ain't gonna get that kind of money on that side of the street. Another thing is, with the marina, yeah, during the winter, all them boats gotta go somewhere, and that's gonna be all in your parking spots.
Well, I, I believe if, if we change the rules and somebody wants to develop, part of that marina's going away.
That's exactly what would, yeah, you'd have to, that's the only way to.
There's no, there's no rule now for them just to build on, along the street.
Right.
Without getting rid of, you know, at least some of the area.
Unless they file DEQ permits and build over the existing structures that are in the water, and make over the water.
Yeah, the exception I could see happening is, is the current Humbug, um, office building, they're, they're, that's where the residential's on the second floor right now, I could see that being bulldozed and putting in townhomes there on top of commercial, that, that, that was probably the only thing that would, would, would.
Yeah.
Would, would make sense to me, just looking at the properties, and you could put some nice townhomes that are looking out over the marina, that could be attractive for someone to purchase.
Yeah, I think stuff like that, that's why I was saying, if there was a way to write it for existing structures that have residential, even though they're outside of the ordinance at current, which it's, it's tricky, cuz you, you scare people away that invest money in the city, which is a great thing, if they can't utilize their property the way that they intended when they purchased it, but at the same time, it depends what you want in the long run. The decision we make is not for, in three weeks, if they wanna tear that down, or allow somebody to go in that apartment, the decision we make is opens up the door for five, ten, whatever, years down the road, or we have to go back and change the ordinance again, and lock it back down, which is much harder than opening it up, and we've seen that with, like, fences and other weird things that have happened.
Trailers.
Yep.
I was gonna raise the same point, uh, that John raised, where, where do all the boats go, right? In the wintertime, all of the land space there is just covered with, uh.
Covered boats.
With, right, with short boats, uh, dry dock boats. The other question I would ask is, I mean, we all see, uh, the businesses we have, primarily, uh, JP's, um, slows down dramatically.
Slows down dramatically in the wintertime. Clearly, the draw of the marketplace is the Marina. And in the wintertime, it becomes somewhat stagnant. Desolate. Um, my question would be, we don't live on the main thoroughfare where there's lots of traffic. What kind of commercial businesses are gonna draw customers all the way from Gibraltar and I-75 to this area just for a few business opportunities? I mean, is it, is it really a, a good place to, for, for businesses to, to put themselves? Especially when, in rare time, it's very slow, slow here.
So you don't subscribe to that, build it and they will come, huh? Just kinda like Las Vegas?
Yeah, not, not in our, not in our situation, no.
No.
Not unless you can, excuse me, right? Not unless you can develop something that attracts people. And, you know, in the wintertime, what kind of things attract people? The holidays, um, and then, and then it's kinda sparse in between.
And that's why the park downtown is the way it is and why it's there because there were no business developers that wanted to develop that downtown area because it wouldn't be profitable for them. And I know this is a little bit different scenario, but same kind of concept. But I think this started with the idea of one resident wanted to build over a commercial property. But I like how you pointed out, if we agree to changing our zoning, this is what we could potentially be looking at. Three different areas where they could use a zoning and build in a different way than we are currently developed. And do we really want to do that? I mean, it started with a small idea, but I think this really shows what could happen if we do go with this, um, change.
You guys forget, you gotta come to Gibraltar. You don't drive through it.
It's kinda like a dead-end location.
Yeah.
If I may, just to your question about the, the market, um, demand for commercial, the zoning ordinance doesn't regulate, obviously, for market demand. But the idea, I think, that is almost a self-constraining condition because you're right, you're not going to be, you're not necessarily gonna be a regional destination. You know, people aren't gonna be coming in. I think the type of commercial you can support is a, maybe a small pizza joint, maybe, you know. I do think you have some market constraints. And yes, I don't know if you end up having vacancies on the first floor if someone were to try and develop. Your immediate market is your neighborhoods, the people who are here all year round, and the types of, you know, essential-type businesses that would support those types of residents. Again, but that's almost outside of the purview of the zoning ordinance, right? Like, you, you would be opening this lever to allow four-second-story residential potentially. And then you kinda would just have to see what someone else's imagination and what they think is, is possible to support. I, I, what I'm getting the feeling is not, a desire to not really entertain this, but I'm gonna offer one last kind of tool that's in your toolbox to consider. If this were a special land use, which would require it to have certain conditions on that type of development, so anyone who wanted to propose it, it wouldn't be just a site plan. You would have certain standards that we could develop around that to say, we only want buildings of, I don't know, I'm gonna say 3,200 square-foot buildings or, you know, between 5,000 and 3,200 square-foot buildings to allow second-floor residential. That could be a standard. You, we could create some more guardrails, and then you would also be given the chance to really look at every scenario, make sure they meet those standards, and then recommend it to the city council. So that's, that's just another tool I wanna make you aware of that you could potentially use as leverage if...
So 3,200 square feet, the existing...
Oh, I don't know. I'm just, I was just kind of giving an example of what type of standard you could write. Like, if you're worried about a huge condo complex coming in, right? You could say, we only will allow this in buildings smaller than X square feet. Just as another kind of layer of nuance, if there is any interest. I, I'm generally getting the feeling that there is not interest, but I, I just wanna give that as the last thing to consider. I'm happy to continue the discussion, but just in terms of the, the actual technical tools at hand.
In the spirit of transparency and bureaucracy, should we, should we take a, a roll-call vote on if we wanna move forward with it or if we wanna not?
Can I approach Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, commission members, Garrett, she made 31140 Island Drive. Love the evolved information that you provide the commission, including, you know, worst-case scenario considerations, other practical restrictions. So I think it's great, and it's exactly the information this commission needs to further debate topics that have long-term considerations for the city. I thought it would just be helpful, as you're closing out your discussion, to just highlight a couple data points, I think, that are relevant to the discussion at hand. There's a lot of discussions around financials. I know Mr. Baker talked that from a development perspective. I know you alluded to that, Chair Hutchinson, on that topic as well. We are coming out of budget discussions and into budget review and formal approval at our next council meeting. And we obviously also have, as we look at, different audits and other aspects of our financials. I just wanna highlight a couple points, which I think are important as you consider your trajectory. In our most recent budget discussions, the city has a taxable value growth of 4.8%. We're lowering our millage for a second year in a row from a budgetary cycle perspective. We have the highest revenue and highest fund balance in our city history in the last audit presentation. We have good equity positions across all of our major accounts, and fund accounts, I should say. We have vacant buildings that are now being occupied with businesses. We have capital investments in existing buildings and locations that hopefully are leading to improvements in the infrastructure of those locations. With that being said, I don't wanna paint an overly rosy picture. We have a lot of long-term risk in our trajectory, and we have to think about how we address severe infrastructure neglect, which has significant dollar allocation requirements. And we get a lot of feedback from our community on how do we balance the tax burden on our residents? And if we wanna preserve what this community stands for and generational presence, how do we not overwhelm those households with increasing taxes? And I think it's a real consideration, as you think about balancing the tax burden, on how do you balance responsible development that provides more for those that are here and helps balance the burden on our residents in this community, coupled with their local government design to serve them? And I wanted to segue that into what I think is important, which is, you know, Chair Hutchinson, I think you brought up a really important point, which is what do our residents think? And I know this commission has been shared the resident survey, but I just wanna highlight a couple key questions and data points from that. Obviously, we had a pretty significant response from a resident survey perspective. And if you look at, what is Gibraltar missing? The top category was stores, shops, food and dining, specifically, um, local grocery store, coffee shop, more and better restaurant options, a downtown area with these things. The second data point was around kid and family community spaces. And then the third layer of that was water access. And I'm glad to reshare these results for your further consideration, but I think they're important in context. As far as what makes Gibraltar special, the top three categories were community and friendliness. Second was small-town feel, and third was water and nature. And again, I'll share the granularity, 'cause there's a lot of detail here. The last data point that I think is important is we asked our resident population, like, how do you think about the future of Gibraltar? And we provided them options, and we also provided them, input your own option if you don't agree with the options. But the overwhelming majority leaned towards Gibraltar should be focused on preserving the character of our community and offering more for those that are here. Not to say that people didn't have differential perspectives across that optionality, but I just wanna, wanna provide that context. So I think, why I think these are important data points is you all are tasked with making serious long-term decisions, including the task in front of you. While we are in a solid financial state, as I sit in front of you today at the podium, we have long-term risk. We have a lot of historical obligations. We have a long, long-term neglect that costs more money than we have in our bank account today. And we're doing everything we can to chip away at that. Meanwhile, taxes continue to go up. Some of that is completely out of control. By law, there is tax increases annually to our residents. That city has no say in. But what we need to be thinking about is, how do we continue to grow our dollars that we have? How do we think, think long-term in driving development that is responsible for the revenue that brings to the city, while also providing optionality according to what our residents want to see in our city? And then balancing that so carefully with preserving the character and what makes us special. And I think that's the task at front of you. And I think, you know, Jane, you've done such a phenomenal job in providing evolved information today. I hear the sentiment, which I think I'm hearing some pretty strong opposition to this topic. You all are the commission members that vote on this. I would just ask that you think about the concept and context of the guardrails, the risk that it could present to altering your trajectory vision, while being realistic that we have to make sure we're thinking long-term for the financial sustainability of our community. Otherwise, we will continue to put the burden on the residents. We'll continue to not have the funds to address the long-term neglect that we are trying to chip away at, and, and that's the balancing act. And I think, you know, as you face these big decisions, there are ways to responsibly put guardrails on them. So Jane, as you think about this topic, whether it's, yes, this commission wants this opportunity or not, if it's a yes, could you put the guardrails on to cap the number, the size, all the different elements of the practical translation of what that would mean? Because Chair Hutchinson's feedback is real. Dollars drive decisions when it comes to business. And dollars are very lucrative in this lane and are a realistic outcome of your decision. So, in summary, I just wanted you to have those data points. Appreciate the discussion immensely, and Jane, thanks for the evolved information.
Thank you.
So, Jane, in general, based on, on what, you know, Garrett just said, if you expand the opportunity for commercial and residential, does that not help lessen the burden on the current taxpayers that are here? Now, what I do know is residential development has a greater burden on our infrastructure in general than what industry does.
Correct.
You know, 'cause, you know, the, the industrial plants, they're not, you know, gonna use sanitary sewers as much as we do and all that. And this is based on previous planner that we had before, when I had conversations with them. So, 'cause I always understood that residential was actually less burdensome, but I learned my lesson and found out it actually wasn't. But my question, I guess, does that help the tax base and help lower the taxes for the people that are currently here and may come here in the future if there's place for growth somewhere versus no growth?
Yeah, I think theoretically, if you were to welcome, you know, development of this mixed-use site, and it's something that people felt is gonna be, you know, the market would support, and they come in and build it, you're gonna receive a lot more taxable value. And, you know, just, those are new businesses and residential units that are gonna be on your tax roll at a higher rate. And you're gonna receive more tax dollars from that. I mean, that's, any new building that you're gonna have, have assessed, it's, that's automatically gonna have a higher tax base.
We've just seen a new restaurant come in, revitalization of the Marina, new bar. They're working on a new workout room and space, and we, our taxes only go up.
It's hard...
Where does that revenue go?
It's hard to, we can have further discussion tactically on those variables, but to isolate those...
There's gonna be much more revenue than what...
Isolate those more recent circumstances, yes, there would be a taxable revenue increase for the city. And as I just alluded to, we are at the highest revenue we've ever had. But to your point, depending on the timeline of the implementation of those and the associated assessment and taxation of those, you're gonna see that hopefully continue to pay dividends over the long term. Tactically, you could isolate that of our data now, but you're not gonna see a measurable exponential change off those two, but you are in a better place because of those two, not only for the offering to the residents, but the taxable revenue than if they are sitting there vacant.
The city will have more profitability off a higher tax revenue. However, there's a minimum state requirement on the amount of tax increase that comes to residents.
Yes.
Property tax for residential is a minimum of lesser, it's like lesser inflation or 5%.
Right.
Mandatory.
Well, I was thinking more like...
So we won't see a reduction. It would just lessen the potential risk to the city of not having funding for infrastructure rebuild.
Exactly, and...
It's not like it's gonna be like, hey, residents only pay 2% tax increase now. That doesn't change ever.
No, no. I, I'm more thinking along the lines of, you know, our water rates, you know, what we have to add to the water rates to help pay for, for Shuva. You know, what our ta, how, the dollars that go into the waterfront for our storm sewer, sanitary lines and everything else in the city. The dollars that go into the roads, you know, that's, that could get spread out. Instead of having 1,500 households, if you had 2,000 households, now that burden is spread out, you know, to more people.
Precisely.
That's, that's what I'm looking at as far as the, the difference in the tax dollars.
And if you look at it, like, Commissioner Bill, to, to that point exactly, Chair Hutchinson's spot on. If you look at, if you're a household in Gibraltar, as we all sit here and pay taxes in Gibraltar, by law, there's a mandated annual increase, and it's capped at 5%. And that's based on either the Consumer Price Index or inflation. The city has no say in that. You're gonna incur that increase regardless of the city Gibraltar's intervention. Where the city does have intervention, I alluded to in my first earlier point, right? Our millage, we're, we're proposing reductions the last two years. We have to have funds to take care of the city and keep it afloat and address the infrastructure. The less funds we have, the more we have to then consider passing that burden onto our residents. We're not doing that now. We're trying to avoid doing that now. But it's a realistic possibility if we don't balance the revenue sources with the need. And the need is big and decades-long. And we're trying to chip away, all the while saying, when we're all not sitting here in 20 years, what does the city look like? And have we built the right long-term vision to enable not pushing existing households out because they cannot afford the increasing burden that we or the state or county has placed on them? So it's a real consideration.
Do we wanna, the only other thing I'll add, again, I'm pretty stuck on my mindset. However, just because we make a decision today doesn't mean that a year from now or two years from now, we couldn't go back and make a different decision.
Yeah, I'd at least like to continue the conversation versus stating, you know, like, none of us are interested in it, 'cause, 'cause I, I think there's an opportunity there if we do it right.
Do we wanna take a roll-call vote on keeping discussion open or saying no for no?
I was gonna say, if somebody, it's up to the commissioners on whether they wanna move forward.
Yeah.
If someone's willing and wanting to make that motion, and if not, then I think that's pretty clear.
I know we talked about this last meeting about, you know, zoning and keeping it C3 with the overlay. What is the chance that, and right now, we have the map showing the different areas that could be impacted if we move forward with your proposal tonight? But what about considering just rezoning portions of this area that could be impacted? Meaning, like, the area above Humbug where this conversation started, and maybe the area across the street where that park is right now, across from the gas station, maybe coming up with a zoning for those two parcels, for those two areas that could move forward with this idea without impacting the other, let's say, waterfront property or the property next to the storage facility?
Yeah, we, we abs, I mean, that's one of the, yeah, that's one of the things I was curious and to hear from you all, if you, if it was really the waterfront sensitivity that we wanna avoid? Or is there interest in supporting this type of development? It would be a different type of development, right? You know, the waterfront is, like, to your point, has a different attraction. But if that's something you wanna support elsewhere, that's a different conversation we can have. It could be an overlay. It could be rezoning those sites. It may be, come down to a, a special land use requirement. There's a couple of different ways we could do it. But if we wanna continue to have that conversation, then that's maybe a consideration.
Like, for instance, there one area that used to be a downtown area that's now a park. That's a thought to start there. We'd have to lose the park, but... We'd have to lose the park, but.
Well, if I remember correctly, that park's not a permanent park.
Right, it's not a permanent park. And that would give the residents a downtown feel in the downtown area without impacting any of the other areas that are unique to Gibraltar.
Well, we'd be right back to what Jeff had mentioned though, because it's on the landward side, it may not have the same value as the water side.
Right.
I mean, I guess if a developer wanted to do it, but.
It doesn't necessarily have to have a high value. It's commercial with residential upstairs. It doesn't have to be the highest value of that scenario.
So I guess I will ask you, if you want me to continue the investigation, if you have a couple of requests for me, then I'm happy to do so. Or if you want to table, you know, just let this die on the vine and we can always bring it back up. So.
That's what I say.
We need a motion.
Need Garrett to go ahead and schedule a field trip and take us all to a nice little marina up north that's got commercial on the bottom, residential on top. You know, St. Clair Shores area or something and.
Lake Orion.
There you, there you go, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to let it die on the vine.
I second it.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Thinking about it, it's good looking.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Nay.
Let me do a roll call vote on that. Uh, Baker?
No.
Bilk? Cox?
No.
Prizone?
No.
Hutchinson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Upholzer?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. So motion passes to end it.
Well, that was easy.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, again, Jane did a great job providing, um, upfront, upfront feedback on the two items. A is sign review for 15701 Vreeland Ironclad Environmental, Environmental Solutions. Uh, I think there's some quick bullets that you had documented around how this falls outside of our current sign ordinance.
Yes, uh, so it's, part of it is just kind of a deficiency in the, the description and the plan that they submitted. They've kind of plopped this ironclad next to the existing Downriver Storage Center sign. So it's not clear that whether one of these signs is going away or whether there's gonna be two signs. The ordinance only allows for one freestanding sign. Um, otherwise, the, the sign itself conforms with the size requirements. It does not exceed the overall area, it doesn't exceed the height. Um, but we just don't know exactly what, I guess, is being proposed. In addition, uh, the fact that it doesn't have a nautical theme is something that the commission should note. And maybe when we go back to the applicant, uh, to get some more clarity, we can also provide some feedback on that item.
Is this a brand-new business?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't ever remember seeing anything.
It's the entrance to the dump.
Is this the P-CAS facility?
Did they buy it though from the other place? I don't know.
That's where they're putting in the.
Is it the P-CAS facility?
Oh, well.
Yeah, is that still going on or what?
You talking about the PFAS plant that they're supposed to be building? I mean, that's supposed to be.
The PFAS plant.
Is that part of the feet, PFAS?
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where they parked, they got storage right there, that driveway going in.
Wilkinson owns it.
I, I drove by it just the other day, the signs are already there, by the way.
Says ironclad.
It says ironclad on it. Basically, what you, what you see as the new sign is the new sign, it's there.
Are there two signs?
Well, it's good.
Got it.
It's a good practice run to have to go back and remove it.
Oh, there's two signs.
So that's, was the thing that I was flagging really is the main ordinance, uh, requirement is that there are, it's only supposed to be one freestanding sign. If there are in fact two freestanding signs there, then it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement.
So it sounds like we need a.
Ordinance master to drive by there.
Yeah, an enforcement for sure.
We need an ordinance enforcement, and then my feedback would be that it needs to follow the ordinances. We've just made, we followed the ordinance with, was it Henry Ford and the other one? So like, we have to be consistent.
We do.
And I think they need to come back with a updated version of their proposal.
I agree.
Look, I do have a question. It's actually not related to the sign, because it's kind of disturbs me a little. So if, if, if it's gone through planning, we've approved the planning and we've approved the project through Eagle. Nothing was ever said about them outsourcing it to another company to run the PFAS plant. So.
Oh, yeah, that's fair.
You know, so was that kind of like a, a violation of what we all agreed to?
I think so.
I'm not sure, because this, this company's never been mentioned.
No.
I, I think from a, a zoning perspective, I don't know what the Eagle permitting process is. But from a zoning perspective, you're not approving based off of a single owner or applicant. I mean, there is an applicant who comes before you, but it really doesn't matter what happens to the business after you approve the business itself. It's not.
We didn't approve a business. We were basically told that it was the state, the EPA and E. Huh?
I don't think it's the same location.
Okay, I hope not. Because what we approved was the state and, you know, EPA, yeah.
That still begs the question, what are they doing?
I think was.
Yeah. It looks like it's gonna be a trucking company for trailers and stuff.
Right. Now, if you're looking at their website, they've, they've, it, it seems like it's not.
They haven't begun construction on the PFAS.
Yeah.
Site, so I believe this is a separate location that they're identifying. This isn't, the name Environmental Solutions might.
Could be anything.
Right.
They could, they could have trucks that they're storing. I mean, I don't know, right? We don't know. They could have trucks they're storing at the Downriver Storage Center that they're gonna run. They'll go out and work in other communities, and they're just keeping their trucks there. I mean, we don't have that detail.
And that's the reason, one of the reasons for the, the PFAS facility was to limit truck traffic.
Right.
Because they don't wanna keep hauling the, uh, leachant out.
Right.
So, and then we get another company right next to them that's gonna be hauling trucks in and out.
Yep.
So we need a motion to.
Loan shit and that stuff.
Have them.
To reject it.
To reject this and then come back with updated information.
Yes.
And what the business is, what's the sign.
I, I don't think.
This is just for the sign, the business stuff is separate. This is just, no, that's not with us.
To reject it in, um.
Motion to reject the sign application as submitted.
Thank you. Do we have support?
Requested to comply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you.
Well, you said the sign's already there, right?
It's already there, yeah.
Well, that'll be a code enforcement issue.
Enforcement gets to go out now and tell them they have to remove their sign until they get it.
Obscurity for the ordinance.
Yeah, there we go. The next one, item B, is a sign review for 29255 West Jefferson, formerly known as Save More, um, Dollar General sign.
Yeah, so they've, uh, proposed two signs, one on the building, one replacing the monument or freestanding sign, uh, that the Save More Pharmacy used to have. It does not comply with the current requirements in a number of ways. The, starting with the wall sign, the, uh, wall sign is not supposed to be more than 24 square feet. Uh, the proposed wall sign is 97.5 square feet. The, uh, height of the wall sign is supposed to not be higher than whichever of the following is lowest, which I find to be really confusing language. But essentially, the.
It's the opposite.
Yeah. The, uh, requirement is that it's not supposed to be higher than 15 feet above the front sidewalk elevation. Um, and right now, it is 15.12 feet above the sidewalk elevation. So it's almost there, it's just slightly above. Uh, you know, that's a margin error, I would say, in terms of measurement, but.
And it's centering it in the building.
The size is.
The size.
The size is comparable to the existing one too, right?
Right, the size is.
It's actually smaller.
Yeah.
And so the same goes for then the freestanding sign. They're occupying the, what's the existing Save More, uh, space was. The, does, that does not comply, it is higher than 10 feet, it is 11.87 feet. Other than that, uh, I'm less concerned about the setback from the right-of-way considering that's also existing. Uh, as you probably are aware, though, the Dollar General does not normally have a nautical theme, and they've gone with their standard sign branding here. So does not necessarily meet that requirement.
Is that an, is that buoy there?
Well, there's a buoy there.
Is that buoy there right now?
Right there at the top, and you're done.
Well, there's a buoy there.
It is there? I guess I've never noticed it. I worked there for like, when I was like 15.
You're saying it's a nautical?
I've never noticed it.
Yeah.
It does not meet code.
It's way too big.
Yeah.
Uh, my.
Navigation lights.
My thought is like, uh, the existing Save More signs are kind of outside. This is where it's tricky, right? Like, we're holding people, do we now, since we have the opportunity with a new business owners, especially a large one, to get back into conforming to our ordinance? And then also add the nautical theme?
Yes.
Which also, it is kind of funny, I don't know if you, like, on social media, like, Dollar Generals are like everywhere.
Yeah.
Like, up north. There's literally one like every five miles, it's wild.
In Rockwood, in the corner.
There's literally one, yeah, like, four miles away. It's crazy.
They're taking over.
It looks like it. I mean, I guess you could count that towards the sign. I, I.
Yellow to match.
The.
It's gotta be red or green.
If you re, if you recall, when Dollar General was interested where the Bablo Pavilion is.
Yeah.
They actually wanted to build there, and anytime we had suggested, well, you have to have a nautical theme, we want this. They kept saying, that's not how we market our buildings. Everybody in the whole country knows what Dollar General looks like, we're not gonna change our signage and stuff. So this, this might come back again, you know, what, they might argue against it, so.
Yeah, and that begs the question, do you wanna take the risk of keeping a vacant building or having it occupied with something, so.
The others.
They saw, they show the sign with a buoy there, so the buoy is already nautical.
It's up, yeah, that's definitely up to your interpretation. Uh.
Can we move the buoy? Can you slide that buoy over a couple feet? Just tie the buoy to the, to the post.
Yeah.
Well, the Gibraltar Storage, then he could've just put a bolt underneath the first sign he come up with.
Hang an anchor under the, the thing, okay.
The other thing, the only other thing I wanna add is that because this parcel is Zone C1, the rest of Jefferson is Zone C2. I really think that's why, well, it is, I know that's why the, um, wall sign standard is so small. So there, C1 is really supposed to be for these businesses right here, you know, the downtown local business core. C2 is more of that general commercial. I don't know the history of why that parcel is C1, but that's.
That only that one parcel is.
Yeah, on Jefferson, and then it's C2.
It's right up against apartment buildings.
Yeah, the condos are right behind it, and then the apartments after.
Yeah.
So, you know, if it was a C2, there is, um, and I'm not, I'm only saying this to kind of explain where that, I feel like there's a little bit of a, kind of awkward gap in terms of 24 square feet is pretty small on a building of that size.
Yeah, the Save More sign looks, always looked nice on there, I thought, but.
Um, I'm seeing that, my interpretation is they're gonna reskin the existing.
That's.
Sign, right?
Right.
That's where I see too.
And the original sign is non-conforming.
Yes.
Right?
Well, or do you take, as far as size or as far as?
As far as size.
Yeah.
Height and size.
Yeah, the, the freestanding sign is too tall.
So it's a choice of do you take.
They're not, they're not constructing something new, they're basically just re-signing an existing.
They're, they're going to utilize an existing structure to advertise, correct?
Which.
Which makes economic sense.
Which we did, which we did allow.
We let Riverbillies use their existing.
We let Riverbillies and Henry Ford, they just had to add nautical themes. So we should be consistent at least in that.
Piece, I'm gonna put a little anchor in the top of the.
However, yeah, I don't.
Is our nautical theme geared just towards the DDA district? No, it's throughout.
It's throughout.
Yeah.
Which they did do on the Henry Ford sign, uh, they're, they're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So. We need another motion to have them come back probably with, uh, some, pretty much the same motion.
They could add another little sign right next to it with an anchor, nautical.
I mean, you could get creative easily on this and do something. I feel like they're a big enough business, they could.
Any word on all the other signs that are around DDA that's not nautical?
Well, those are.
Parkside apartments aren't, uh.
So, uh, non-confor, I mean, it's really, your trigger for bringing conformity is when someone alters it. A non-conforming sign stays non-conforming until there's an alteration or reconstruction.
Well, they, they both reconstructed both signs.
Uh, which ones? Oh.
They did in the last year and didn't say anything.
Right, yeah, so that means they didn't come show up and get in a, um.
They, they just totally bypassed us.
Right, yeah. We talked about that, about having the ordinance person go talk to them, whatever happened with that, anybody know?
Park a trailer in front of it.
I'll send a note to Chief and Ordinance Officer Lacorse on all sign discussions we had today.
Quite a while ago.
Absolutely, there was no sin.
Park a trailer in front of it, and you'll have the ordinance officer there.
Let's keep that one for Commissioner Forum, and what do we think on Dollar General? Need a motion to.
I, I think we need to be consistent, guys.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, 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 I make a motion to go back to them and ask them to conform to the, I'm not as much concerned about the size, to be honest with you. It's the nautical theme is what I'm concerned about.
Right.
Is that gonna be part of your motion?
Yeah, it's, it's, my, my motion would be to, to waive the, the size requirement, but, but request a, a change to incorporate the nautical theme that our ordinance requires.
I second it.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okey-dokey.
May, may I ask just a little bit of direction as I correspond with them? Uh, would you wanna see a nautical theme on both the wall and the freestanding sign? Or would it be sufficient to have it on one only?
Well, if they leave the buoy on the outside sign, and then just put an anchor or something for a period at Dollar General.
I just, I just wanted that, yeah, I just think.
We had Riverbillies do both, so we gotta.
Maybe technically that's nautical, but it looks junky. I mean, it does look like it's something that needs to be removed. It doesn't look like something that's there to make the sign look nautical.
Looks like they're taking out the LED component of it.
Yeah.
Assuming there's an LED component below it.
Really, you could put that in your backyard.
Okay, okay. We could get the, uh, Waterways Commission to use that. Sorry. Okay, post, no postpone and refer to items. Do we have anything for Commissioner Forum? This is a good opportunity to bring up the existing signs at locations that.
What do you bring it up?
Have not been.
Yeah, there you go, I bring it up, there you go.
So can we have the.
Ordinance Officer.
Ordinance Officer go look at, what is it, Park?
Parkside.
Simon Apartments.
Parkside, you got the, the one that's, um.
Yeah, the new one, I forgot what that's called.
The new one up on the corner of North Jib and Jefferson, uh, and the one on Middle Jib. Um, yeah, I don't can't think.
I'll, uh.
All three of the apartment complexes.
I'll capture those, and for any commission members that have additional ones they'd like to flag, I'll send a note to Chief Ordinance Officer first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, what's going in where the doctor's office used to be? They putting up signs there too, or no?
That's the Henry Ford, that's the one they came for.
No, 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 where Gupta's office used to be, not Gupta, but, um.
You talking about the dentist?
The dentist and all that, yeah.
On Jefferson? Yeah, there's an accountant and a dentist in there. Yeah, what is going in there? I noticed they fixed it up.
Well.
No idea.
They redoing the building.
Yeah.
Um, anything else for Commissioner Forum? Uh, be looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okey-dokey.
Good evening, commission members. Uh, since we've already opened up, uh, the Planning Commission with Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to call the Downtown Development Authority Meeting in order. Katie, would please call, roll?
Shoemate?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Bilk?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Here.
Razon.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Olson. Hyatt.
Here.
Upholzer.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse absent member?
Motion to excuse absent member.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, this time I'd love to welcome public comment, do we have any public comment from members of our public hearing attendants? Uh, Commission members, back to you, I'd like to call your attention to approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with an approved agenda, I'd like to call your attention to our first item of approval of previous meeting minutes. Commission members, uh, you'll see Item A, DDA Minutes of four fifteen twenty twenty-five, uh, and you'll see those minutes captured in your packet. Is there a motion to approve Item A, DDA Minutes of four fifteen twenty twenty-five?
Make a motion to approve the uh minutes from last month.
Motion by what, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next I'd like to call your attention to acknowledgement of correspondence, uh, this is gonna be Item A, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, DDA Budget as of five thirteen twenty twenty-five. Uh, Commission members, I alluded earlier in my commentary around the broader uh budgetary uh cycle that we are enduring. And I'm glad to follow up with information to make sure you have full visibility for those that haven't had a chance to witness uh the council level discussions. Uh, shout out to Finance Director McEwen uh for her great work, but I'll just summarize, uh, in your packet you'll see the attached DDA budget. Uh, as well as estimated DDA budget for future expenses, including one item for your consideration this evening. Uh, transfers of general fund have been made through the third quarter, revenue shows the tax collections and interest is coming in higher than originally inspect, uh, expected. Uh, you'll see the water heater expense that was approved uh back in January, uh, as well as the public safety ATV to the estimated budget, uh, that uh ATV purchases trending for June.
What, was that the five thousand?
Correct, yep. Uh, we've had further discussions and making sure we bridge the gap uh to execute against that accordingly and target it for June. Uh, beautification budget was increased and that was based on your approval in February. Uh, one important topic, uh, I know Commissioner Wood, you've uh raised this for discussion, we've had uh very extensive discussions on this matter is our DDA bond funds. And making sure that we're putting our money to work effectively. Uh, you'll see here, community HVAC replacement, uh, and you'll see some of the associated details, uh, parking lot resurfacing. Uh, City Hall parking lot resurfacing, uh, in addition to the Community Center, which is Item Two. Uh, you'll see uh entry and wayfinding sign, City Hall and Community Center roof repairs, DPW facility backup power, DPW offsite storage. Uh, Gibraltar Road uh Bridge replacement over the Frank and Poet. Uh, we have all of these items as prioritized items, uh, we've made a lot of progress uh in many of these projects. Infrastructure Advisory Committee is hard at work and Finance Director McEwen is a keep meeting us accountable on uh, on drawing down the funds we have allocated. But I just wanna flag all those items for you as well. So with that being said, uh, this is an acknowledgement of correspondence from Finance Director McEwen, I'm obviously representing this on her behalf this evening. Uh, if there's no questions or comments or concerns, uh, I'm glad to raise it now for any discussion. Yeah, please.
Can we get like a, a status spreadsheet just on these items alone, since we have to, they have to be completed by May thirty-first? So we should really track them closer than that.
Absolutely. Yep.
Just looking at them in this manner?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll request that from Finance Director McEwen, uh, and it's May tw, uh, May thirty-first twenty twenty-six, just to make sure we're all aligned on that target, yep, absolutely.
And, and then you said you added the five thousand in here, where did you put it, or where did it come? I see a DPW Kubota for twelve thousand seven fifty, that's the Beautification Committee Kubota?
I can take this as a follow-up, Commissioner Bilk, to make sure I don't misspeak, uh, Finance Director McEwen can uh make sure she clarifies that and I'll send an email to Commission members.
You mentioned something about bridging the gap over the five thousand, where were you gonna pay the rest of it?
Uh, the, the, the Commissioners had approved that five K allocation and I know they were working to make sure that all funds were whole. Uh, both with existing budget and that five K allocation, I think at the time the five K was proposed, there was still a window of gap, but I'll clarify that.
And there's quite, there's like twelve thousand something gap.
Exactly.
And that's what it looks like that DPW Kubota looks like.
Exactly, so I'll, I'll clarify that for you as well, um, and I'll send a note to all Commission members on those details unless anybody else has any further questions on that item.
Is that saying that we, we gave five K to the support of the police and, well, emergency UTV? You're saying we may have used more than five K?
No, you, your five K was granted and the allocation that was asked from DDA was according to the expected use within DDA. Uh, and then the expected funds they were gonna be able to fill the gap with. Uh, I think Finance Director McEwen and uh Chief Bullard have been working to fill said gap, I think they have measures to do that, uh, and that purchase is targeted for June. But I'll get all those details clarified, just so you can see specifically where those dollars are represented in the budget you see currently.
When that one says Kubo, DPW Kubota, I was assuming that was the Beautification Committee Kubota, but that one, that'll take care of it, so they should reword it anyway, so you know what it is.
I think the five grand was for the emergency one for like the ambulance and stuff.
Correct, correct, yeah.
That is correct.
That's the one I was referring to, yeah.
Sounds like they're putting more to the budget to cover the rest of it.
Exactly, they're, they're working to bridge that gap and uh I'll follow up with uh Commission members on all details via email.
And then, one other quick item, she did a great job, cause she has like the summary above.
Agreed.
Which I think is cool. Um, at the bottom, current balance in the bank accounts, eight oh five, six nineteen, which should be the difference of the total revenue from twenty-four, twenty-five to year-to-date, right? Can she just add the sum at the bottom?
Yeah, absolutely.
Into the, so that we have, I mean, it's easy math, obviously.
Agreed.
It'd be nice to have.
Yeah, I like that, flag that, absolute, yep.
Kinda gives you a line of sight on your checkbook.
I like that, I will request that addition. This is great feedback, any other items, uh, Commission members wanna see as follow-up for budget? Or any way of tailoring the representation, the information for you all?
Like target dates for, what are our target dates for these eight items?
Target dates.
Target dates and then all the work that we have to do before we get to that target date.
Yeah, project status. And Councilman Cox, I know you're certainly the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, so if you wanna provide any color for your Commission members, I'll give the floor to you, if not, we can take it as a follow-up.
We can, we can provide uh dates. We're currently working on, for example, the City Hall parking lot and the Community Center parking lot are actively involved on developing the specs. We intend on those being bid within the next three weeks. Um, so to give dates of completions or things were not quite there yet. Um, but our intent, for example, on those two projects are to have them completed by the first week to second week of September, so. From out to bid and produce and install till, that, that's the duration of time we're looking at.
Yeah.
I mean, you could give.
If we can get a visual on that, that would be great too, like a visual of, okay.
It's a, it's a timely.
Complex, cause we used to track that in automotive expect, uh, monthly expect, expected spend.
I like it.
And I think that's what you're looking for, is when do you expect to spend this money? Then when do you actually spend it?
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a great flag, so what I'll do is I'll work, uh, it's timely, cause the Infrastructure Advisory Committee's meeting on Thursday. Uh, so I'll make sure that I flag that for them as a discussion item, on just like a project roadmap, if you will, and to your point, Commissioner Bilk, to the extent that you can calendarize funds where feasible. But I think I, you can also then get the information from Finance Director McEwen on where we've already completed or are in-flight for completion and associated spend. And that will, I think, help you organize the picture and then as we're, you know, a year plus out from the target that we've put in here for you, we can monitor that very closely together, so. I like all the feedback a lot and I'll take those actions. Any other ways this could be tailored, I think, I think Finance Director McEwen does a really nice job on kind of the layout, but anything else besides the input today? So it's clarification of items related to uh the ATV, uh, and Commissioner Bilk, I'll make sure I follow up on that and where those dollars are represented and what the gap is that needs to be filled and any support that's required as we target June. Uh, Commish, uh, Chair, uh, Hutchinson, I will look at that absolute representation, just so the math is represented visually. Um, and then I will also include a DDA project, uh, kind of overview and I'll lean on our Infrastructure Advisory Committee, uh, to provide input on that, just so you know what's in-flight and where we can reasonably counter.
I wanna make some clarity on that list too, that um, the Gibraltar Road Bridge replacement is not fall under the bond.
Correct.
Surplus bond funds, so um, we can't expect that to be done by May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Correct, and, and it's a, it's an important clarification, cause we've lobbied for funds on that, um, and uh, I know we've had representatives coming in, most recently to our council meeting to reinforce support and hopefully achieving said fund support, so. We're looking for dollars for anybody that will uh help support the cause and that's definitely a critical one for us, but I agree with uh Commissioner Cox on the segmentation there. Any other feedback on just how we represent the budget, uh, or tactical questions around what you're seeing here? All right, I will take all that feedback and I'll make sure uh Commission members receive a follow-up email. Uh, is there a motion to uh receive and file this correspondence on budget?
Motion to receive and file, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, this evening we do not have any unfinished business uh to discuss, uh, so it'll bring it to new business. Uh, Commission members, as you uh look at your Item A, which is a temporary portable fencing for city events, I'll provide a little bit of context. Uh, you'll see the recommended action, um, that's put in your packet is a motion to approve purchase of temporary portable fencing from Epic Solutions in the amount of seventy-nine hundred and sixty dollars for future events, including Fourth of July. Uh, just a little bit of background context for you as you consider this, uh, number one, you'll have uh three quotes, uh, that have been assembled for your consideration, that was the recommendation there. Uh, as we have been deep in Fourth of July planning amongst broader city event planning, we have regularly scheduled meetings with our department heads. Shout out to Parks and Recreation Director, uh, who's, I think, done a great job off the on-ramp, uh, as he's not only executing events and planning for Fourth of July, but looking to build out broader, I would say, evolution, including baseball field improvements, et cetera. Uh, but what the discussion was, we had our DPW team, we had uh Chief Bullard, uh, we had Austin, our Parks and Recreation Director, we had Clerk Tomasic, myself, uh, and others. And really what we were talking about was as we're looking at the planning and laying out our configuration of all that you've approved, uh, we don't own portable fencing, uh, for our events. And that puts us in a position to either rely on neighbors for which they may or may not have availability for said portable fencing, uh, or rent portable fencing. And so the discussion was, well, here we are with pillar events such as Fourth of July, with parades throughout the calendar year, with music in the parks, with a lot of other events relevant to utilization of outdoor spacing. We don't want, or at least my personal opinion, and I think that was reflected in the room, was we don't wanna buy cheap temporary fencing, this is sturdy stainless steel structural fencing. Um, so that we can use this and we can reuse this and store it and set it up within our own DPW department to not incur the regular expense of rentals and/or the resources and reliance on our neighbors. That's why this is being put in front of you, uh, just for that context, uh, it'll have, uh, hopefully long-term applicability and hopefully cost savings over the long term accordingly. Uh, with that being said, I'm not an expert in fencing whatsoever, so our DPW leads and our um Finance Director, uh, uh, put this together for you all this evening. It is three quotes, uh, DPW is uh obviously gonna have responsibility to uh take care of this fencing, uh, both putting it up for events, taking it away from events, storing it accordingly. But I wanted to flag that for you all, it's just kind of a background strategy behind the, the uh motion that we're requesting this evening.
Where would we store it?
Clerk Tomasic, do you recall if we landed a final spot, I know they were looking at different options.
I know they were gonna look at options, but.
Cause it'll be outside, right, for storage as well, we don't have like indoor storage enough.
Yeah.
Likely it would be inside.
Cause it's seventy-five, the one shows like seventy-five, eight-foot section, so six hundred and something feet, six thirty.
It's, it's, it's significant and I know a couple things, they were, they were, they were looking at that, so to Clerk Tomasic's point, practically speaking, in our current point of view, it's presumably gonna be outside. Uh, they could explore other avenues, like we have uh ample basement storage here, but the practicality of moving that back and forth might be obviously limitation. So, so I think, if you think about it, they're looking at, I don't wanna speak for them, obviously that's a, um, hinder, hinders your wanting to take action this evening, I can make sure that's a follow-up, but that's in their court.
And it was probably two grand to rent it for a year or something.
It was not insignificant and the annualization of those costs would clearly outweigh the costs that we're looking to.
So like in a two to three year stretch, you'd get the money back anyways.
Yeah, not to, yeah, not much of the resources and relying on your neighbors and the unexpected ability of them to have it or not, um.
It increases safety, all that stuff.
It increases safety, it was, the quotes were assembled to be more aesthetically pleasing and structurally sound, um, I'm not an expert in fencing, but the thought was if it's gonna be stored outdoor, then stainless steel and other measures, make sure it doesn't uh.
Yeah, corroded.
Get, get corroded and uh lose its value quickly, so, I, I'm, I'm really relying on uh the representation of the DPW team and Finance Director McEwen for the information you have assembled. I'm, I'm glad to follow up with any questions though, and storage was one that we flagged right off the discussion.
It's interesting that the painted ones are ten dollars cheaper than the non-painted ones.
The other ones are probably galvan, uh, is it all galvanized?
Yeah, it's, it's powder coated, the, you know, there's, cause I'm looking at them here and it just, yeah, and I was gonna ask the same question, where they were gonna put them, cause that's, that's a lot.
Do we have to assemble them?
No, they probably come somewhere kits.
I think it's just the bottom.
Yeah, the feet come separate in the, in a bracket on the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at, if you go to Uline, you'll see the feet are separate, you can take them off.
Do we, I'm trying to think, like, where do we put, do we normally do, like, where do we put them on the Fourth of July, I can't remember.
Use orange.
Yeah, we've used like.
Well, we used to, last year we got from Trenton, Trenton loaned us our uh the fencing for.
Yeah, that's kinda crappy, but we're like.
Lot easier than that, snow fence stuff.
Yeah.
John, how would they move them, throw them in the back of a?
Throw them in the pickup or use the uh backhoe, they got forks that go on the bucket on the backhoe.
Oh, so you could carry a bunch of them on those forks.
Yeah, yeah, just throw them on there and.
Gently.
So you're looking for a motion?
A motion to, they recommended the uh seventy-nine sixty uh quote, uh, from Epic Solutions. Uh, that motion, obviously the, the time element here is this would allow us to obviously acquire and thus implement for Fourth of July, which is hard to believe that we're less than two months away for that. But obviously there's broader applicability, music in the park and other.
This would drop us to like seven ninety-six on our bank account.
I'll make the motion to purchase them.
Support.
A motion by Baker, we have support, um, obviously any further discussion on this matter, since this has been one that's been raised. Um, I got notes then, so I'll take action on the storage elements, uh, to make sure I follow up with that, uh, transportation, uh, and other questions that came up today, just so I can close the loop. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, uh, that motion is carried and that will bring us to our DDA Director's Report, for which we have none this evening, unless there's any topics anybody would like to raise. And if not, tabled and referred items, it is also blank on our agenda this evening, so I'd be requesting a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a great evening, thank you so much.
Fence two football fields.
My, my concern is, my, my concern is, is we're being storm, make sure they secure it, so that it doesn't get, walk off with a trapper, that's, that's.
Well, they got the pole barn over by the church and all that stuff.
Yeah, but you got enough to line two whole sides of a football field.
Yeah.
Are we ever gonna use that much?
Well, we use.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of fencing.
You start putting them out, then they got places they can use them on the parade row, you know, where the streets and.
You gotta rely on the entire perimeter of the, uh, of the.
Bar, yeah.
The area over here.
I'm not, can I ask the Attorney Department, you were just last week.
The carnival and stuff.
Well, with the rotary doing it, they didn't have to put up a fence. No figure, eh, they made us put it up, you know, that's the license, oh yeah, sure, that's what the license called for, so who's bullshitting who? I know the rotary went to the association for.
You know what I mean, it's like, strange.
Thank you, everybody. I'll, I'll ping Mary and uh Team, which I'm, I'm. Do you have any, do you have work to do?
Probably deserve it for everything you do.
That was for, uh, for your presentation, thank you.
Well, I can't.
Okay, that was good, it's, thank you, yeah.